Three meetings tonight, Cunningham Town Board meeting, followed by a public hearing and then the regular meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller? Roberts?
Woo?
Here.
Chair Marlin?
Here.
We have minutes from several meetings, February 3rd, 2020, February 10th, February 10th, joint meeting, and February 17th, special meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. There is one correction for February 10th, under elected officials present. It should be Cunningham Township Assessor Wayne Williams.
Oops.
Are there any other corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I've had a request to change the order in the agenda to accommodate a personal issue. Could we move reports of officers up to come next on the agenda? Is there a motion to that effect?
I move that we move our reports of officers to the next position on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Sharice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes.
Right, Wayne?
Thank you all for accommodating my request. As I said before, our website is up, www.ctl.us, where residents, taxpayers, and other users have 24/7 access to our residential property record cards. While overhauling our assessment practices, we noticed a lack of data for apartment buildings within Cunningham Township. To correct this deficiency, the assessor's office sent surveys out to apartment owners, and we asked that the surveys be completed so we can make sure that apartment buildings are assessed fairly and accurately. After speaking with several township assessor, other assessors at professional conferences throughout the state, throughout the country, we were informed that other assessment offices have tried this method of sending surveys out. The typical response has been between 5% and 12%. 12% was the highest that we got. 5% was probably the most common number we received. This includes normal township, which is a very similar township to us in terms of number of parcels, type of parcel mix. That said, we sent out 171 surveys. We got 115 back so far by our March 1st deadline, so that's 67%. This shows that the apartment community and the assessor's office are working diligently to fix inequities and commercial property assessments within Cunningham Township. I also have been doing things like attending Central Illinois Rental Property Professional Meetings, Champaign County Association of Realtor Meetings, and I plan to continue to do so. Our goal is to give every taxpayer the ability to access our township website that will provide assessment data, permit history, sales history, and sketching pictures of every property that we're responsible for. Transparency and access to data for taxpayers is vital to preserving comfort with assessment process, as well as allowing them to gather information whenever, wherever taxpayers choose to do so. The contract with Eagleview has been signed. The hope, whether cooperating, is that the fight will take place at the end of March, so pray for dry but cloudy days. And then we'll have access to aerial imagery. I do plan on giving the town board a access as well, so you guys will be able to see what we see. Any questions? And I can also take questions for bills if you guys have them, for my side.
Mary Alice?
So you said that you email, I'm sorry, you sent out surveys to all the apartment buildings. What was the number of units, the minimum number of units?
Seven.
Seven. Okay, so I guess that apartment owners should be aware that if you own an apartment building with six or fewer units, you should not have received one.
Yeah, and we have found that we had some buildings that were misclassified in our system, and where we sent, say, an apartment building owner had three properties, or I'm sorry, four properties, but we only sent them three surveys. And so we had a couple people reach out to us about that, and it was just due to coding errors in our system. We fixed those. So everyone's been very, I'm very happy with their result so far.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening.
Hello. Are we on committee to verify bills?
Yeah, we'll go back to our.
I will go.
Well, actually, is there any public participation? I don't have any cards.
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Great, so we have the committee to verify bills. Just in terms of town fund, we had $49,749.65 in our standard expenditures. And then, as you know, out of our town fund, we did a payout to Carl on the property tax case. So the total for the town fund actually comes to $257,011.87. The general assistance fund had its standard is $47,747.85, and then we added the Carl payout to that. So the total from the general assistance fund was $216,631.48. So the combined total of payout this month was $473,643.35. And I've attached the town bills and the credit card statement, and I'm happy to answer any questions that town board members have.
Mary Alice?
So with the amount that we had to refund to Carl, does this change the amount that we had in surplus?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have an accounting of how much is left in the surplus?
So I usually prepare quarterly financial statements, so in April, I will bring not only the profit-loss, but I think it would be helpful for you to see the balance sheet across all of our accounts. I was able to easily move information, you know, move money from our savings account to our checking account to make this disbursement, but I certainly want the town board to be aware of what our surplus looks like given that. So you will see that next month with that quarterly report.
Thank you.
Eric?
How feasible would it be on these reports to break out those components that are strictly assignable to the assessor's office from the supervisor's office? Would that be relatively easy, or would that be a pain?
You should, so if you go to the income and expenses by division, you, oh, you mean line item by line item? You'd like to see what class?
Yeah, for example, the salaries and et cetera, yeah.
So you have the summary where you can see the full salaries by division, and you can actually see supervisor, independent of assessor, the town fund, other, the only salary is actually our clerks stipend, and then the general assistance is the case management staff. So when you go to the detailed bills, I have an option of including the class. If you want to know what class that bill was assigned to, it'd be very easy for me to change that report. So for example, you could see supervisor's salary, you would have the memo, and then it would say class, and it would say town fund supervisor, so that you could see what class that specific expenditure is from. Is that what you're asking for?
That, that would, yeah, that would be helpful. And so that, and so that class could be assigned to each of the salary items, for example.
Absolutely.
And to each of the, well, I guess, some things it wouldn't be relevant for because you're shared, but whatever is broken out would, I think that would be helpful.
So our shared expenses fall under town fund others, so it's very easy to see. So for example, we share the clerk, so the clerk is under town fund other. We share utilities, that's under town fund other, and things like that. So you can actually, that's how we're using that classification. And it's quite easy for me to change the report, so you can see that. I also, as you know, did a recent deep dive around salary and salary comparisons, and I looked at the assessor, the supervisor, I looked across a multi-year period so that I could see how it's changed since I became the supervisor. So if you, you know, we did a lot of research around that piece. So if you have specific questions, also feel free to email me, and I can bring that to the next town and board meeting.
I, I'll take this occasion to say that I thought that your response to the media inquiry was really profoundly good.
Thank you. It was the type of thing where I was very happy to be asked those questions, because I had great answers, so it was not hard.
Just a question on the credit card statement?
Mm-hmm.
I think the Ooma was voice-over IP. What's the $500 charge for Indeed?
So Indeed is the posting of the assessor's field position that is now currently open.
Okay, so it's a $500 charge just to post the job opening?
My understanding is that you buy a certain amount of time, and you also buy a certain amount of reach, and so, because I've used, I didn't, I didn't use Indeed in this case, but I've used it in the past. It's kind of like Facebook. You get to choose how deep a reach, and you actually buy how many responses. So if you, if you purchase a certain amount, it ensures that you'll have a pool of a certain size that comes back.
Okay. And then, I think I, somewhere, I don't see it right now, I saw the charge for the aerial imagery, the down payment or whatever. Is that listed under admin service, administrative services?
That would most likely, this is a question for Wayne, but I, because he indicates the classification, let me see, it should be in the memo, if you look under administrative, admin services.
Yeah, there's like 3,500, I think, it was like 2,500.
Yeah, so it's pictometry, international corp, deposit due at signing, 2348, and 2548 and some change.
Okay, I see. I just want to make sure that's what I thought it was on the summary sheet. Thanks.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the town fund and general assistance fund?
So moved.
Second.
Is that Jared?
That was me.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Woo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of officers.
Okay, so just underlying from the town bills what some of the current statistics are. So we've had a very flat number of participants for general assistance, so we're at sixty, excuse me, 96. We have probably a turnover of about 15 per month, so there's quite a bit of churn, a lot of folks getting jobs, especially this time of year, and then new folks coming on our rolls. We had 36 homeless this month, the same as last month. It's pretty much split males and females. Our average age really sticks around 47. So far, we have served 212 people this fiscal year, and 86 of them have been homeless just with our general assistance program. We continue to see a pretty low rate of rental assistance. We had five last month and five this month, so three eviction cases and two move-in assistance, and we've helped 27 households, an average of 11 per month. So that is a bit lower. It probably corresponds with folks having more opportunities for jobs in the spring months. We will have an annual town meeting on Tuesday, April 14th, at 6:00 p.m. We will be asking for permission from our electorate to dispose of surplus property. We have a basement full of old office furniture, typewriters, and computing equipment, so we'd really like to clear that out. This leads into my next announcement that's not here, but given that, I just came from the Public Health Board meeting. There are still no known or confirmed cases of coronavirus here in Champaign-Urbana or in the county. The Health District is urging people to prepare and prepare now, because it's most likely going to come to our community at some time. There's a great resource on the Public Health District website, it's C-UPT, excuse me, The very first thing you'll see is a link to the coronavirus, and there's just a wealth of resources on that. You can actually see how to prepare as a business or employer, a childcare facility, and the schools. There's specific to-dos, and I know that Julie Pride from Public Health has been, has a show on UPTV to talk a little bit about public health. I did want to point out that our participants typically do not make enough money to stockpile two weeks of food or supplies. They absolutely don't, actually, and so we are working on a plan to basically have boxes prepared of all the supplies for every single participant we have, and we will either do pickup or delivery of those boxes. So we're working on that piece. You will probably see some associated costs that were unexpected. I do have an emergency fund of $20,000, and so it seems appropriate to use that for this purpose. And we continue to just, you know, urge folks to, to prepare and especially reach out to faith-based leaders and places where people are congregating, for them to help get the word out to their congregants. So just a few notes from the Public Health meeting that we just came from. I wanted to just, I'll just, I gave you quite a few highlights, I just want to point out a couple that are relevant. We do have a art show that is up at the YMCA that will be up until March 20th. It's called "Our Stories, Our Places, Our Resilient selves," and it highlights the voices of Urbana residents who have been through it, that may be poverty, homelessness, domestic violence, et cetera. We hosted a dialogue with the Interfaith Alliance, and actually are doing a number of community engagement grants with the University of Illinois. I was just invited to be the keynote speaker for the Poverty Summit at the University of Illinois School of Social Work. That will happen May 1st, and I've been presenting quite a bit on campus about poverty and really helping students engage with the, kind of the local picture, and figuring out how they can dovetail that with some of the research work that they're doing. We have been selected by two School of Social Work master degree students to serve in our office this summer, so we're very excited, and it looks like we'll have at least one bachelor's degree student as well. So that's three full-time staff who will essentially serve as interns in our office to augment our staff, and it's a great time for that, because we expect the SNAP issue to come down, and we may have some issues with, you know, the coronavirus as well. We've been doing pretty intensive training, and I just wanted to point out, I highlighted this in our, our trade, the training of all of our staff will be on our website shortly, so we'll have profiles of all of our staff, their background and experience, and specifically all the training that they have received. A number of these trainings have actually been free, so we're very grateful to our community partners. But we have four people who are rape crisis trained, 40-hour rape crisis trained, one 40-hour domestic violence trained, and then we have a 40-hour training in C-U Trauma and Resiliency. And every one of my staff have been through trauma-informed care and also know how to disperse narkyatna in case of an overdose. So, and we continue to sit at all of them, all of the tables in the community, the Community Coalition, Crisis Intervention Task Force, Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless, Human Services Council, and Workforce Development Roundtable at WorkNet. So we are busy, but, but happy to serve township.
Happy to answer any questions. Bill?
Yet, did they happen to say how many people have been tested locally? You said there were no cases yet.
This is a great question. One of the issues is that we have not had a lot of tests. There was, as you recall in the paper, a young person tested who came to McKinley. There has been a lot of self-quarantining. The university has been a really proactive and a partner in that, and so there's been a lot of quarantining, and we do now, as it recently, have local tests to disperse. Typically, what happens is that an individual, and anyone who has flu-like symptoms should go straight to convenient care and be swabbed to see if they have a normal course of the flu. If they do, then there's no further issue, they just need to heal from that process. If they appear to have flu symptoms and they don't swab positive for the flu, then they, at the discretion of the medical personnel, they may be administered, they have the coronavirus test administered. So at this point, I mean, the big issue, and you can certainly speak to your members of Congress, is that we need a lot more tests. As you may have seen, Congress did pass a bill to fund local communities, and those, that funding will be coming through the state, and the mayor probably has additional information.
It's because I watched part two of the video recorded today with Julie Pride and Elizabeth Hess. Julie said that about 10 tests have been administered locally and sent in, so results take several days to get back.
Yeah.
And I will put a plug in for UPTV Part Two. The interview on COVID-19 is going to be up and running this week, and it's a second in the ongoing series of interviews with Public Health District, and they're about 20 minutes long and extremely informative and accurate, so it's a great place to get really useful information, and this thing changes by the minute, so it's good to have these weekly updates.
Okay, any other questions? All right. I don't believe there's any unfinished business. New business is approval of the annual town meeting agenda. You should have received the corrected agenda, which is a small correction. Under Item Six, it should read "Program Updates from Cunningham Township Supervisors and Assessor's Office." That was the only change. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it, then.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? Voice vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, seeing no further business before this meeting, this, we are adjourned. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Charlie? Should we do a poll now?
Why is it not official if you do it?
Yes.
Ah, okay, okay, we haven't voted Bill in.
Okay.
So was that going to be?
Actually, you love being a stickler.
Yeah. Oh, it's too many.
Charlie?
That's just Photoshop. That's just Photoshop. Bill's face, or Dean's face.
Huh?
Well, that would not be smart.
What did I see?
So the quarantine period is what, 22 weeks?
A section that I saw.
And then after that, it has run its course, or it should have run its course?
I forget. It was income inequality, violence, some combination of things, but yes, I have seen this website.
Well, at least it's on a month.
Let me see. Cut.
Well, it also seems that the cases have been rather marginal for most people.
What I think is really interesting, among many things, I mean, it's terrible, I think it's terrible, but one of the things that's really interesting to try and figure out is the distribution. Why is the distribution the way it is? For example, I don't think we've heard any cases in the United States.
Sweden, Norway, Finland, Denmark, Iceland.
Are there any cases there?
Yeah.
Are there some? Okay.
Of course, the other thing that really everybody is concerned about is the ratio of this to this, which you get, and how likely are you to die.
There's Dean.
One minute.
Ready? Thank you. We have two events tonight. The first is a public hearing before the Urbana City Council. The public hearing is for the purpose to receive public input concerning a proposed annexation agreement between the City of Urbana and Olympian Properties Development, LLC. The proposed agreement is for a tract of land consisting of approximately .26 acres and generally located at 1909 Brownfield Road in unincorporated Champaign County. The tract has a permanent index number of 30-21-03-302-006. I'd like to call this hearing to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meetings. These are February 10th, a joint meeting, February 24th, and March 2nd, a special meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Eric. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Additions to the agenda, I would request a motion to move item number one under new business, which is mayoral council member appointment for Ward Six. We could move that up to Section D and make that number two, right after our census presentation.
I move to approve the adjustment of the agenda proposed by the mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Sharice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Well, that would not be smart. So, the quarantine period is what, twenty-two weeks? And then after that, it has run its course, or it should have run its course?
I forget. It was income inequality, violence, some combination of things. But yes, I have seen this website.
Well, at least it's on a month. Well, and it also seems that the cases have been rather marginal for most people.
What I think is really interesting, among many things, I mean, it's terrible, I think it's terrible, just, um, human health. But one of the things that's really interesting to try and figure out is the distribution. Why is the distribution the way it is? For example, I don't think we've heard any cases in the United States. Sweden, Norway, Finland, Denmark, Iceland. Are there any cases there? Of course, the other thing that really everybody is concerned about is the ratio of this to this, which you get, how likely are you to die?
There's Dean.
One minute.
Thank you. We have two events tonight. The first is a public hearing before the Urbana City Council. The public hearing is for the purpose to receive public input concerning a proposed annexation agreement between the City of Urbana and Olympian Properties Development, LLC. The proposed agreement is for a tract of land consisting of approximately .26 acres and generally located at 1909 Brownfield Road in unincorporated Champaign County. The tract has a permanent index number of thirty dash twenty-one dash zero-three dash three oh-two dash zero-zero-six. I'd like to call this hearing to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Does anyone wish to speak during this public hearing on this topic? Seeing none, then I will close this hearing and adjourn. And now, I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, March ninth, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meetings. These are February tenth, a joint meeting; February twenty-fourth; and March second, a special meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Eric. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Additions to the agenda, I would request a motion to move Item Number One under New Business, which is mayoral council member appointment for Ward Six. We could move that up to Section D and make that Number Two, right after our census presentation.
I move to approve the adjustment of the agenda proposed by the mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Sharice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Next up is public input. I have one card from Mr. Carlos Donaldson. Would like to come forward.
No one, except for the newer members. Mr. Mill, of course, he doesn't know who I am, but I keep an eye on him. I live right around the corner from him.
Can you speak into the microphone?
He's doing a wonderful job, so I.
I know Carlotta.
I'm not, I'm not here to give him a hard time. But I did want to commend the mayor for the proclamation that was sent out. I appreciate that. It's oftentimes that people forget those that have paved the way for them, and I just wanted to personally thank you for the proclamation that you sent concerning the Elders of Six. That's it.
You're welcome. We owe you a debt of thanks.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Urbana City Council? All right. We have a presentation on the Census 2020, Alyssa JG. Alyssa is one of the members of our hard-working staff Census Committee. They've been at it for several months, developing materials and really getting the word about, about the census, and this is now the week to start, so.
Hi, how are you guys? I am Alyssa JG. I'm the Community Development Specialist in the Grants Management Division. So, I'm here today to talk about the census. We've been really fortunate that we received a grant from Public Health, and we've been able to use this money to really do a lot of outreach, so that we can attempt to get a complete count here in Urbana, as well as Champaign County as a whole. We're working with several different agencies. So, you have a printout of a report of, you know, how we've spent our grant money so far. We've used it on things like a mailing, so every house in Urbana has gotten a postcard. We are doing promotional videos, attending events. We have some really nice pens right now. We're doing social media posts, and then we're also using this grant money for staff time, as well as purchasing five new tablets, so that we can have a little hub with us for people to complete the census when we're at events. So, if you haven't heard, the census is happening, and Census Day is April first. As of today, you can take the census online. It is live, and this week or next week, you should be getting a mailer, and it'll have a little code on there, and that's what you can type in, so it'll track your address. If you don't use that mailer when you take your census form, you can just pull it up by address. So, you can do it either way. And basically, we need to have a complete count of the census, so that we know who's living in Urbana, and we can make informed decisions to really help people and celebrate our diversity, as well as meet the needs of areas where we're maybe not fully serving currently. So, today, I'm going to go over what the census is, when does the census happen, who gets counted, where are hard to count populations, why does the census matter, and then how you can help. So, the census is required by the Constitution. It happens every ten years, and it counts every person in the United States and five U.S. territories. They share, it's a nine-question form that can be completed by mail, online, or over the phone. Over the phone, you can take it in fifty-nine languages, and online, you can do it in thirteen languages. And by mail, I believe it's just Spanish and English. And a quick timeline, March twelfth to the twentieth, households will start getting their mail with how to respond. March thirtieth and thirty-first, individuals experiencing homelessness will be counted by census takers. April first is Census Day. Of course, you can complete your census before this day. And then throughout April, census takers will be counting everyone in group quarters. This would include prisons or jails, nursing homes, dormitories. And then May to July, census takers will be doing follow-up to households that haven't completed their form or haven't completed it fully. They can come to your house up to seven times, so if you don't want someone knocking on your door, please complete your form completely. And then in December, council will be delivered with the president and Congress. And then in 2021, we'll begin with redistricting and starting to utilize that data. So, who gets counted? Everyone gets counted. Unfortunately, there's a lot of hard to count populations, and those have been identified by groups that were, that had low response rates in the past. So, that would include young children. A lot of people just forget about the baby at home. Also, highly mobiles, that's students and renters, which we have a lot of here in Urbana. If you are going to school here, you count here in Urbana on April first. Also, it's hard to count racial and ethnic minorities, non-English speakers, low-income households, individuals experiencing homelessness, anyone who's not a citizen. Your citizenship will not be asked on the census. I know that was in the media a lot, but it is not a question on the census form. So, my best advice, if you don't want someone to come knock on your door, if you're not a citizen and you are having concerns, would just be, complete your census on time fully, and there will be no questions asked. Your census form will not look any different than someone who is a citizen if you are not. Anyone identifying as LBGTQ may have a hard time taking the census, because it only offers male and female as your options. You can choose not to answer that question. However, someone will come to your door, or you could answer both male and female if you feel like that fits you as well. Individuals with mental and physical disabilities are hard to count, and then anyone not living in traditional housing. So, hard to count populations. This is a little map of previously hard to count populations. As you can see, the dark blue would be areas in Urbana where we have hard to count populations. These are areas with a lot of students and renters, so we're really doing our best to reach out to them. Urbana has a lot of hard to count populations, but that's also exciting, because it means we have a really diverse community, and it gives us an opportunity to continue to put our face in the community and interact with populations that we don't always get to interact with. So, that's really one good thing about the census as well. And why does the census matter? It counts everybody. It's also our civic duty in the Constitution. It says you need to complete your census every ten years. It's about redistricting. Illinois can lose up to two congressional seats based on this census, so it's really important that we count everyone in Champaign County, because those two congressional seats that we could lose would really group together a lot of central and southern counties, and those are very different places with different needs. And so, it would be problematic if these small communities get grouped in to larger congressional districts. Also, we use census data to make informed decisions. Here in the city, we make a lot of decisions based on the census, and we make a lot of future predictions based on the census. So, our data is only as good as the data we collect, and that's why it's really important that we have good data. And then, we could lose up to fourteen hundred dollars per person per year not counted, and this would be tax money coming back into our community from the federal government, and that goes towards things like schools, infrastructure, healthcare, a lot of different services. And then, as a city, we would have to kind of pick up the bill on these services for everyone not counted. And what you can do to help? Talk about the census. Tell everyone you know the census is happening. Whether or not they live in Urbana, they still need to be counted. You can sign a pledge card. Bridgette has, Bridgette has pledge cards she is passing out, and we have them all hanging in the lobby, saying that you're going to complete your census form. And then, share informational materials with your ward. If you need help getting informational materials, you can contact me, Bridgette, or Wendy. We can guide you to a lot of different resources, and we can get you some printed-out materials as well. And if you have any other questions, you can contact me, Bridgette, Wendy, or Sheila. We are heading the Census Committee here. You can visit 2020census.gov. They have a lot of really great questions, fully answered for you. And then, there's also an eight-hundred number if you would like to speak to a person.
Are there any questions for Alyssa? Eric?
I've never done the census online before. I don't think it's been possible. One person can go online and complete the form for the entire household?
Correct.
Okay.
And I tried it today, and it takes just a couple minutes. It's very easy. Any other questions? Bill?
Yep. I'm surprised they don't list the nine questions. They're pretty easy to answer. There's no questions about income and things like that, right?
Yeah, in the short form, there's no questions on income.
In the past, the problems we've run into with the census has been, after the census, we get the data wrong. We get the data back wrong, so I guess that's something we need to figure out how to deal with when that comes back. But I think one thing in 2010 was, that was confusing to people, were the new apartments that had, like, rented out by the bedroom. There would be one apartment with A, B, C, D, because there were four bedrooms, and it was confusing whether that was one household or four households. And sometimes, people would fill out multiple census, censuses for one apartment.
Yes, and that's part of us doing our outreach and education. The University of Illinois is also a partner in the census, and hopefully, we can communicate to students that, you know, whether or not they're renting by bedroom or they're sharing a lease, they still are one household, and they should complete one form.
Okay, thanks.
Would you like to provide information about the kickoff celebration on Thursday, the twelfth?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Thursday, the twelfth, at Urbana Neighborhood Connections, there will be a kickoff celebration at 2:00 P.M. Anyone is welcome to join us, and they'll have all kinds of different activities and some refreshments.
It's 1402 East Main Street. Eric?
So, many of us talk to students, and one of the questions for a student would be whether that student should be counted here or where they live, or where they're from, and especially, that'll be relevant now, because many students will be going back to their community of origin next week during the spring break. And, of course, the census period is covering both the time that they're there and the time they're here. I guess, for those of us who really want to get the numbers up for this congressional district, this legislative district, this community in terms of money that comes back to us from the state and the federal government, we'd like to count them here. But in the interest of, of just giving them unbiased information, or not according to our political interest, do you have any thoughts about what's really the right thing for a student to do?
Yes, so the census, their policies, wherever you spend most of the year, that's where you get counted. So, if you're a student and you spend most of your year here on campus, that's where you get counted. And it's another big push for anyone who's not even from Illinois, but from another country, another state, that they get counted right here in Urbana. We also strategically sent out these postcards, so we did one mailer. I believe they got sent out last week, and then we're going to be sending these one more time as soon as the students get back from spring break, and we have it in four different languages, and then it's going to every house in Urbana. The university is also working really hard to send out mass mailings and emails to remind students to complete their census form for being here.
Okay.
And there's a special process for counting students in dorms and that sort of thing. So, the short answer, the right place to be counted is Urbana for students.
Yes. Right.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've moved up the appointment of a city council member to this, to this point on the agenda. So, I am very pleased to submit a recommendation for the appointment of William Colbrook for the Ward Six City Council seat. Mr. Colbrook and his family have lived in Urbana for six years, having moved here from Mohammed. They sought diversity in the school district and the culture, history, and values of this community. Mr. Colbrook brings a background in law enforcement service with the Illinois State Police and Parkland College. He's had extensive training in the areas of leadership, community policing, bias training, mental health, and de-escalation practices. He has worked with members of the Illinois General Assembly, served on panels appointed by the governor, and has extensive experience developing budgets. Some of the issues Mr. Colbrook identified as being important to Ward Six and the City of Urbana include the economic viability of the downtown, University Cunningham, High Caras Road, and Philo Road corridors, and I'm touching my face, and I shouldn't do that. Future of the Stone Creek Golf Course and surrounding neighborhood, reducing gun violence, improvement of relations between city employees, including police, and historically marginalized residents, and addressing deterioration of properties that can become a blight in the neighborhoods. Mr. Colbrook's term will end on May third, 2021. So, if you'd like to come forward, Bill? Oh, wait, I guess I need to vote. We need to vote. Do we need to move approval? You need to move approval. Okay. I will do so. I will move approval that William Colbrook take Ward Six position.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Is this a roll call vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Now, you can come forward. We'll administer the oath of office. Why don't we just go in front here? Is that going to Kim?
Sure.
So sorry. How about introducing if you don't?
Okay, so this is my wife, Kim, and this is our grandson slash son, Joe, who we adopted. And this is one of our foster sons. These are actually our big best friends, Joe, and our grandson, Marcus. We were completely raised in the world. There's a lot of boy activity in my house.
Is that everybody?
It is.
All right. You raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, William Colbrook.
I, William Colbrook.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderman, Ward Six.
Having been appointed to Alderman, Ward Six.
In the City of Urbana.
In the City of Urbana.
In the County of Champaign, Illinois.
In the County of Champaign, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman, Ward Six.
Of the office of Alderman, Ward Six.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do you want to take your seat?
I will. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll do it.
Thank you.
I'm calling on you. Your last obligation. So, it's a tradition in the City of Urbana to give a medical service in the city, and you certainly are in the time of the city council. I know we'll be shocked to hear this.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Do you want to open it or take it home?
We want to see it.
Something about my hair. Wow. Wow. That did get you guys in trouble there. I want you to go back to the side. Well, hang on. It's like you guys helped me. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And then?
The chief told me that was.
There you go.
Brian took that for me. That could have been more important. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
It's the virus handshake. We'll wash our hands after this.
No touching faces.
Yesterday that you came up.
Yeah. Everybody, what happened here? My dad's away. I have nothing better to say.
Yes.
That motion passes.
The next item is ordinance number 2020-03-007. An ordinance approving amendments to the City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Budgets and the Annual Action Plans for the fiscal year 2014 to 15, 2015 to 16, 2016 to 2017, 2017 to 2018, and 2018 to 2019. And for the, the committee, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marley?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right, the next is an ordinance number 2020-03-014R. A resolution appointing the Human Resource Manager as an authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for the year 2020. Uh, for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next, we have resolution number 2020-03-013R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the Police Pension Fund. And for the city, for the committee of the whole, I move approval.
Moved, uh, second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right, the next is an ordinance number 2020-03-010. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, and this is budget amendment number five. A action plan amendment. For the committee, I move its approval.
Second. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marley?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next, we have resolution number 2020-03-013R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the Police Pension Fund. And for the city, for the committee of the whole, I move approval.
Moved, uh, second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And the last item is resolution number 2020-03-014R. A resolution appointing the Human Resource Manager as an authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for the year 2020. Uh, for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yep.
And that completes the items coming from the committee of the whole.
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of special committees. Any reports this evening? None? Reports of officers? Carol?
Um, uh, council members and the public may have questions about the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, so I thought I would provide a short update on what the city is doing. Let me start by clarifying that the incident that we are managing is the impact of the pandemic on City of Urbana employees and the delivery of city services. The community public health response is being managed by the Champaign County Public Health District led by the exceedingly capable Julie Pride. We are using the National Incident Management System with, which some of you may have heard of, it's called NIMS for short. Uh, the NIMS framework for our response, not only is this system useful for managing incidents of all types, but it gives us a common language for managing our response should we need to roll up with other entities into a larger command structure. We have assembled an incident management team consisting of staff members from various departments with specific roles. We are also meeting on a weekly basis for the foreseeable future with representatives from other county governments, the University of Illinois, and various agencies under the leadership of Emergency Operations Coordinator John Dwyer. We also send a representative to a separate public information officer group which meets weekly. This coordination positions us to have access to the same information and respond consistently across the community. We are encouraging employees to use the same good behaviors as we are all being encouraged to practice, and I'll repeat them because we just want to remember, stay home if you're sick, cover coughs and sneezes preferably into the crook of your arm, routinely clean frequently touched surfaces and objects, wash hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, which I'm told is two rounds of happy birthday to the person of your choice. If soap and water are not available, use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer and avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. We are developing contingency plans that would allow certain employees to work remotely if necessary, and we are improving our capacity to hold virtual meetings. We are reviewing policies that require obtaining a doctor's note for certain absences because we want to keep people out of the healthcare system to the extent possible. And, um, we have some policies as well that encourage people to come to work when they're sick in order to qualify for certain incentives, and so we're rethinking that on a temporary basis. We are also considering some flexibility for those individuals who run out of sick leave during this incident. I'm hopeful that the delivery of city services remains seamless for the duration of the virus. If the status of our service delivery changes, we'll be sure to keep the council and the public informed. There are areas in which more planning and logistics are needed, including the provision of food and other resources to families in the event of school and daycare closures, and we will update you as those things are put into place. The effort will require a community-wide response, and we, and we defer, except if it's the incident we're managing, which is city employees, city services, we're deferring to the Public Health District because they have the lead on that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Sure.
Um, this is, I guess, a question that I have, because I know this Corona thing is, this COVID-19 thing is, is serious, especially when it comes to younger, uh, auto, you know, children with, with, who don't have their immune systems, um, in place, and older people whose immune systems are usually compromised.
Yes.
But my other question is this, um, will, we have the same types of responses for just the flu? Because the flu this year has been a monster, from my understanding. So, uh, if it's okay for people, I mean, do people have to have the diagnosis of COVID-19 in order to take advantage of these particular, um, steps that may be put in place, you know, particularly for the COVID-19? Or can they, can they also, um, take advantage of it just because, well, they've got the flu?
Well, you know, that's a good point, and I think we're learning some practices. And I'll, and I'll tell you one that's, that's like so basic that we just haven't done, which is, um, Bridget developed a little, um, it's just a little pop-up thing that we're going to put in all of the conference rooms that basically says, you know, clean the space when you're done, and then we're going to put wipes in the spaces, which this, to your point, it's about the cold, it's about flu season, it's just about staying healthy in general, and we've never really given people the, the tools to do that or the, the awareness we have now. Um, we certainly, uh, this, this government, um, is, is not a teleworking government, and I think we're going to learn some skills as we move through this that will, and, and we're going to develop some policies that will serve us well in the long run to allow us to have people working remotely. Um, and, and that's going to be, you know, if someone's sick, we don't want to impose on them to work, but if they need to be home with a, with a family member who is sick and, or, I think the reason that this response is different than the flu is because of this isolation aspect, which is that you're not necessarily sick yourself, but you're being isolated. So it has the potential to run for longer periods, and people can be available to work, but they might, but not physically here. So that's why it's a little bit different. But we're learning a lot that will, you, serve us well in the long run.
But no matter what people are sick from, if they are sick, we want them to stay home.
Yes.
The, the, the whole purpose of the, um, response to this is to avoid overwhelming the healthcare system. That's the main.
Yeah, so that's why I was wondering, like, like, um, one of the things that Carol was talking about was, um, um, if somebody runs out of sick time while they, while they, while they are at home, either with a sick child or whatever in, or sick themselves. So would a person that just, let's say, has the flu or has a child that has the flu, would they also be able to benefit from, from that special type of thing that you have for COVID? Would they be able to?
Well, we're gonna, we'll be rethinking the policies. So, you know, we have, we have standard policies around how much sick time you get, and then when you use it up, um, depending on the circumstances, you can perhaps access, um, family medical leave. And so tho- those will still be available, but, um, we want to make, the, the, the reason why we're formulating a different kind of response is because people potentially, first of all, we don't want them coming to work if they're sick.
Right.
And they may not physically be sick, and yet we want them to stay home because we have the belief, or they have the belief, or someone in the healthcare system has the belief that they have been exposed and need to, to isolate themselves, which has the potential to balloon the, the amount of sick leave that individuals perhaps will use in an abnormal way. So if there are, if there are things that are applicable over the longer run, you know, we can consider that, but I don't know that, that these, that that'll be a permanent fixture of the policy.
Well, another, another thing regarding that, when, when I worked for, um, when I worked in LA, in, uh, Long Beach, we used to donate sick time. So that may be something that you could consider as other, other employees.
That's a good point. We don't, we don't currently have a policy around, um, enabling people to donate sick leave or annual leave.
Yeah, so that's an idea.
Yep. Eric, thank you.
Yeah, one thing that we should consider in constructing this policy is there may well be a large number of people who have symptoms significant, uh, consistent with coronavirus, but they won't be tested because there aren't enough testing kits.
Yes.
So, uh, so I think that the right thing to do is to do the extended sick leave to anybody who is exhibiting, uh, respiratory illness symptoms. And this, this may give us a financial hit, but this, this is what reserves are for. Presumably, in a year or maybe a little more, there will be a vaccine, and hopefully, in a few months or half a year, there'll be enough test kits so that one can actually know. But in the interim period, I think that we should provide the extended, uh, sick leave for anybody who's exhibiting respiratory illness symptoms.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It's, um, it's a continuously changing situation from one hour to the next, so we, um, we're doing our best to keep up and prepare for this, so we'll keep you posted. Um, next item is the ordinance 2020, thank you, Carol, dash 03-011, which is an ordinance vacating certain alleys, the east alley of Vine Street between Elm and Green and the north alley of Green Street between Vine Street and Urbana Avenue. This, of course, is in connection with the 200 Vine Street Project.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll do a brief presentation because the person who would otherwise do it is home with the flu, so. And we appreciate him staying home.
As they should be.
So that, these are, this is the, the formal vacation of the alleys for the, to, that will allow the 200 South Vine Project to go forward. These were always anticipated to be vacated, and, um, we just had to wait until, uh, certain payments were made to the utility companies and they cleared us to proceed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have somebody on standby to help me.
Any, Mary Alice?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to move ordinance number 2020-03-011, an ordinance vacating certain alleys, east alley of Vine Street between Elm and Green Streets, and north alley of Green Street between Vine Street and Urbana Avenue, for approval.
I would like to second that.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dennis. Um, any discussion?
Uh, question?
Yes.
So the, um, the vac, the vacancy has occurred for, or we are about to pass that probably, and, uh, there's a lot of utilities on that. I have saw utility trucks, um, at the site this morning. Uh, do you have any idea whether they're going to be putting the utilities underground or, uh, we don't, do we know exactly how they're going to, um, deal with the utilities across the, the site?
As I understand, the utilities stay above ground, the electricity, anyway.
It's the, um, the electric lines, um, that are going to remain, are gonna, are, will be above ground, but then there's AT&amp;T, there's, um, there's a couple of other ones that are being, um, placed in easements around the site, so they'll, they will be underground.
Yeah, so there's going to be some rerouting of some of those.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Expect foundation work to begin as soon as the weather breaks, and then, um, vertical construction May to June.
And so the, the electrical lines, the power lines will be going through the, through the, uh, the structure.
That was always the plan.
Yeah.
It's just so expensive, too expensive to bury them. There's a lot, there's a lot going on underground in that lot. Um, any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next is ordinance 2020-03-012, an ordinance approving an annexation agreement, 1909 Brownfield Road, which is an annexation agreement, 2020A1 slash Olympian Properties Development LLC. Lilly will present.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hello, Lilly.
Hi, Lilly. Hi, Lilly, hello.
Thank you for that warm introduction. So this is the, um, an ordinance approving the annexation agreement at 1909 Brownfield Road. This is, just to be clear, it's an annexation agreement. This is, just to be clear, it's an annexation agreement. There is no petition to be considered. It's not land that is contiguous to the city of Urbana yet. It's actually kind of distant from the city of Urbana, though, as far as in our, well situated in our ETJ. So I'll begin.
Lilly?
Yeah?
For the benefit of our new councilman, can you say what the ETJ is?
Absolutely, yes. So it's the extra, extraterritorial jurisdiction area. It's one and a half miles from our, our corporate boundaries. In the state of Illinois, as corporate home rule authorities have this one and a half mile buffer, and we, the idea being that as you see, you know, developments, certain kinds of developments, particularly subdivisions, zoning a little bit, there is, the Home Rule Agency has some say and comment over that process. For annexation agreements, we have an agreement with UCSD, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at the staff report, but it goes into a little bit of detail in there, and.
I was able to look at it, thanks.
Oh, great, yes. So we have an agreement.
I'll still take your explanation, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. We have an agreement with properties that are close to the sanitary, public sanitary sewer network, and they're in our, our ETJ, that one and a half mile buffer. And so when someone wants to build something that's going to connect into the sanitary sewer, we ask them very kindly that you need to enter into an annexation agreement with the city of Urbana.
And that's put in, just so I have an understanding, that's put in place to protect the city of Urbana, correct, on, on future expansion or future annexation?
It's really an agreement, it's a little bit more complicated. The 1994 agreement, which I can, we, Community Development can furnish a copy for you, was to redistribute some of the, the Boneyard Creek responsibilities to the cities of Urbana and Champaign, and, and then it was also to, to kind of allow Urbana to have this tool, and Champaign to have this tool to connect into the sewer system, use the sewer system as a way of connecting properties in their ETJs with the city of Urbana. Jim, do you want to correct anything? Yeah.
I'm not going to correct anything, it was well stated, but I will say that the intergovernmental agreement between the sanitary district, Urbana, Champaign, Savoy, and Bonneville is also intended to assure that the proper jurisdiction has responsibility over various aspects of the sewer system. As you probably know, the sewer system's an interconnected sewer system of these five entities. And in the past, there was a question of who took responsibility for what, and the intergovernmental agreement provides for that. I will tell you, but I can't comment on it. It is currently up in the appellate court. There has been a challenge to the agreement. We prevailed at the trial court, and we expect to prevail at the appellate court.
It's really interesting, but a lot of these, these kinds of tools are also to ensure that one day, if the land ever comes apart of the city of Urbana, it kind of looks like our zoning ordinance and building regulations. So Evan and Jessica Barnhart, on behalf of Olympian Properties Development LLC, request an annexation agreement to allow them to build a duplex on a vacant lot. As you can see up here, there's a house on it, it's been demolished since, so it's a vacant property right now, at 1909 Brownfield Road. As the parcel is currently zoned Champagne County R1, single-family residential, it would automatically convert to the city's R1, single-family residential zoning district upon annexation, unless the parcel is rezoned. The owners would like to build a duplex on the lot and have requested that the property be rezoned to the city R3, single and two-family residential, which would conform to the comprehensive plan's designation of the site as residential. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on the annexation agreement and rezoning request at its February 20th, 2020 meeting. The Commission voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend approval of the annexation agreement with a zoning map amendment to City Council. A little bit of background about this site, to be annexed into Urbana, properties must be contiguous with, to the city's boundaries. The property at 1909 Brownfield Road is not contiguous to the city's boundaries at this time. At a minimum, five other properties would need to be annexed into Urbana before the subject site would be contiguous to the city. The annexation agreement will assure that the proposed duplex will be built to Urbana's current zoning and building standards, so that if and when the property is annexed into the city, it will be built, will have been built to the city's standards as of the date of this agreement. The annexation agreement is transferable to new owners of the property and will not expire for 20 years. The property changes ownership in the next 20 years. The new owners will be required to sign an annexation petition with the Community Development Services Department and the city clerk, and we will keep it on file. The annexation petition can then be executed by an ordinance to annex a property if it becomes contiguous to the city before the agreement expires. This particular request meets a few of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The goals that are related to this proposed annexation agreement is Goal 15, encourage compact, contiguous, and sustainable growth patterns. Goal 19, provide a strong housing supply to meet the needs of a diverse and growing community. Goal 34, encourage development in areas where adequate infrastructure already exists. Goal 38, ensure that future annexations or developing municipal territory has adequate municipal services. The Plan Commission held a public hearing and the request at its February 20th, 2020 meeting. The main discussion at Plan Commission focused on the process for developing a property under an annexation agreement. Due to the intergovernmental agreement between Urbana-Champaign sanitary district, UCSD, and the city of Urbana, when someone who owns property within the city's 1.5 extraterritorial jurisdiction wishes to connect to the UCSD sanitary sewer, the city has the option to require the property owner to enter into an annexation agreement. In cases where the property cannot be immediately annexed, the annexation agreement allows a property owner to develop their property in conformance with their Urbana zoning and building regulations in place at the time of development. Thus, when the property is contiguous to Urbana, it will have been developed to city standards and will be better integrated into the city. The Plan Commission voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend approval of an annexation agreement with a zoning map amendment to City Council. No members of the public spoke at the hearing. A quick note about fiscal impact to the city of Urbana with this annexation agreement. The property is not contiguous to Urbana and will not immediately annex into the city. While there are costs and benefits to annexing property into the city of Urbana, the fiscal impact of annexing a single duplex into the city at some future date is negligible. The Plan Commission has reviewed this rezoning criteria and has recommended that the criteria has been met, so I'm going to briefly state the criteria and staff findings. The first staff finding, Olympian Properties Development LLC requests an annexation agreement at, for a property at 909 Brownfield Road. The property is not contiguous to the city of Urbana, corporate boundary, and will not be annexed immediately. At its February 20th, 2020 meeting, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to the City Council of the annexation agreement with a zoning map amendment. The applicant requests a, a rezone from Champaign County R1, single-family residential zoning district, to the city of Urbana R3, single and two-family residential zoning district. The R3, single and two-family residential zoning district would allow the owner to build a duplex. This would be generally compatible with the residential future land use designation of the 2005 Urbana Comprehensive Plan, which is shown on the screen. The proposed R3, single and two-family residential zoning district would be compatible with the surrounding area, as much of the adjacent area is residential in nature. The proposed R3, single fam, and two-family residential zoning district will likely have no discernible impact to the adjacent property values. And lastly, the subject property is suitable for low-density residential uses, like the proposed R3, single and two-family residential zoning district. The City Council has the following options in this case. Approve the ordinance, approve, approve the ordinance approving the annexation agreement with a rezoning. Two, approve the ordinance approving the annexation agreement with the rezoning with additional conditions. And three, deny the ordinance for the annexation agreement with the rezoning. Lastly, at the February 20th, 2020 meeting, the Plan Commission voted unanimously, six a's and zero nays, to forward the annexation agreement to City Council with the recommendation to approve the agreement with a rezoning to R3, single and two-family residential. Staff likewise recommends approval.
Technical questions for Lilly. Jared?
Just so I make sure we're all on the same page, Lilly, this is like making an annex, annexation agreement on hold that could come into effect within the next 20 years if we approve it. We're not actually annexing the property at this time, correct?
No, the annexation agreement would come almost immediately in effect, as soon as the mayor and the clerk sign it, and then it's recorded and all that other stuff. It's not, the property doesn't come into the city.
Maybe I misstated. The agreement, yes, will be in effect.
Oh, yeah.
But it would not actually be annexed at that time.
Yes, you're correct about that, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Just wanted to make sure that I understood that, that runabout. Thanks.
Dennis.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a technical question, too. First, will the sewer line be, that is going to be tapped into this new duplex development be following the right-of-way along Brownfield Road?
Yes.
That's where the sewer line's going to be approaching?
Yes.
And from, is it from a point which is at least five block, or five parcels distant? Is that correct?
The sewer line, it, to my best understanding, to my memory, is actually, runs alongside Brownfield Road, so it's very close to this property.
So it's already there along the road?
Yes.
So they're just going to be tapping into it, should they build a building there?
Yes.
So what's the technical aspect of it? If they're using the facility, say, like, next year after a building is created, but they're not annexed to the city, then are they also paying sewer use tax?
Yes.
So there is a financial income from the connection for the, the sewer sanitation district?
Yeah, and none of those things should be changing, like, they'll still also be paying for the Urbana School District taxes and paying for a certain portion of Urbana roads, but they'll also be paying for the county, you know, so there, a lot of, some of these things aren't going to change much.
But they won't be doing property taxes for the city of Urbana?
They will not.
Not until the annexation. Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice.
So you said that it would go into effect if it was contiguous with the rest of the city. Is it any property that touches it, that becomes annexed, and so you have four different sides here, or does it have to be surrounded?
It doesn't have to be surrounded. It just has to be any property contiguous, and that can be sometimes like the property across the street, if it comes into the city with the right-of-way of Brownfield Road, that would be considered touching, kind of. It could be then considered contiguous. And then at that point, if City Council would want to approve an ordinance, could pass an ordinance to put in force, to enforce the annexation petition.
So do we have a database that kind of keeps track of this stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. The county and Public Works keeps a database of this.
All right, thank you.
If you got a new zoning map in 2018, it should also have the annexation agreements on it.
Any other questions? Jared?
No question, but I'd like to make a motion before discussion. I'll move approval. Go back to this one on the agenda. Ordinance Number 2020-03-012, an ordinance approving an annexation agreement for 1909 Brownfield Road, annexation agreement 2020-A-01 with Olympian Properties Development LLC. Approval with, sorry, it's a long, it's a long motion, with rezoning to R3, single and two-family residential.
All right, and I'll say, I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marley?
Yes, that motion passes. Last item of business, well, last item on this section, Ordinance 2020-03-013, an ordinance approving a major variance for 305 South Race Street.
And I don't, Catherine Trotter will be joining us today. I don't think you've been introduced yet. Catherine joined us as a part-time planner for this fiscal year, and luckily she's been here since we've had some vacancies in the department, and she has filled in that role really nicely, so she is going to take on this case, and I think the applicant is also in the audience, should she wish to speak.
Welcome, Catherine.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you all. So for case CBA 2020, major variance 01, Celeste Schott, on behalf of the Urbana Free Library, requests a major variance to allow parking spaces that are not as long as the zoning ordinance requires. Celeste and the engineer for the project are here to answer any questions you may have. The Urbana Free Library seeks to repave the staff parking lot as it exists now in its legal non-conforming configuration. The subject property is located at 305 South Race Street, south of the Urbana Free Library and west of the Lincoln Square Mall. The lot is used for staff parking and has been owned by the library since 2013. The lot provides 29 parking spaces in a 90-degree angle configuration. The lot is zoned B4, Central Business District, and has been used as a legal non-conforming parking lot for over 25 years. Parking lots are allowed by right in the B4 district. The narrow configuration of the lot, which is 54 feet wide, limits the number of parking spaces possible on the lot. Here's some photos of the parking lot as it exists now. The library is requesting a variance to repave and re-stripe the staff parking lot and continue to have parking stalls shorter than the required length. The parking lot is in poor condition and needs to be repaved. No improvements have been made to the parking lot since the library has owned it. The tree in the middle of the parking lot is to be removed when the lot is repaved and re-stripped, and I discussed this with Kevin Sanderson, the city arborist, and he agreed that the tree is not in good shape and should be removed when the parking lot is repaved and re-stripped. The library has not received any nuisance complaints or reports of accidents in the non-conforming parking lot as it exists. Here's the site plan for the parking lot. The zoning ordinance requires parking spaces to be 18.5 feet in length when arranged in a 90-degree angle configuration. The parking lot, or the parking spaces at the 305 South Race Street lot are currently 16 feet long and 10 feet wide with a 22-foot wide drive aisle, which can be seen on the site plan as well. Granting the major variance would allow the parking, or the library to repave and re-stripe the parking lot in its existing configuration with parking spaces that are less than the required length. Without the variance, the parking lot could be repaved with spaces arranged in a 45-degree angle. This would result in the loss of nine parking spaces, which is nearly a third of the total parking provided on the lot. To summarize, staff found that this case meets all of the major variance criteria. The lot dimensions, which is 66 feet wide, including a 12-foot wide alley, create practical difficulty for the library. The variance request would allow for repaving and re-striping as the parking lot exists now, which functions very well for its purpose. The variance will not serve as special privilege, and the situation was not created by the applicant. The variance will also not change the essential character of the neighborhood or cause a nuisance because the parking lot has existed in its current configuration for over 25 years. The variance represents the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, allowing a two-and-a-half-foot reduction in required parking space length. The zoning board of appeals voted four to zero to forward this case to the Urbana City Council with recommendation for approval of the request of the major variance, under the condition that the parking lot generally conforms to the site plan. The City Council has the following options in case CBA 2020, major variance 01. You can approve the ordinance for the major variance, approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the ordinance. Staff recommends that City Council approve the major variance under the condition that the parking lot generally conforms to the site plan in Ordinance Exhibit A, and I can take any questions you have.
Dennis.
Yeah, looking at the layout of the site plan that you're showing currently on the screen, it looks like there's an easement at the north side of the, of the lot. Is that with the long stripe that's not being used by parking?
On the north side of the lot, it's a 12-foot wide alley, so the lot itself is, the parking lot itself is 54 feet wide. The parcel itself is 66 feet wide, which includes that 12-foot alley.
Is the alley owned by the city?
It is not owned by the city. It is owned by the Free Library, Urbana Free Library.
The alley?
The alley north of the, well, on the parcel?
On the parcel.
No, that's owned by the Urbana Free Library.
Is there a reason to keep the alley? I mean, if the alley were vacated, or if they were reconfigured, the parking spots would be to the depth, probably, that is required by ordinance if the whole setup was shifted slightly north. It looks like the parking spots, but the
utility trucks would have to cut through either the township parking lot or Urbana Free Library parking lot, which would not be ideal.
Oh, so there's a use for that space? Okay.
Bill?
Is that also the alley entryways, is that also the access for the commercial building on the corner? Or do they have a separate driveway on Green Street or something?
At Green and Race.
It does look like that is their access point.
As less as it is, it's the only way to access that commercial building.
Mary Alice?
So my question is for Carol and Diane. Carol, so my question is for the two of you. The three years that I've been on council, the only other parking variance that I remember or recall has been with Broadway Food Hall. Now, it's possible that there is another one that I'm not thinking about, and there were two issues with that. The first one was the curb. I think that was the big issue, but I also think that there was something to do with the length of the parking spots, and I can't recall...
Lori's coming to the rescue, as she often does.
Thank you. So the issue there, and that was on the north side of the building, there was less than 16 feet available, I believe, and any car that parked that was longer than six, than the 15 whatever feet it was, would have hung over the sidewalk. So that was length as well as also backing out onto the streets. There are a couple of issues there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Sharice?
I do have one question, and I know I've discussed this already with somebody at the library. The tree will be removed?
Yes.
Okay, so the tree being removed, does that make room for the length of the spaces at all on either side?
No, the tree is situated in between two parking spaces at the end of the two parking spaces, so it wouldn't make room for the entirety of those spaces to be lengthened.
But it, it being removed will add two spaces, though, maybe?
There are 29 existing, those two are striped, they're just not really parkable.
Uh huh. Question, so, and this is just the staff parking lot, correct?
Yes.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, so removal of the tree will actually make the drive aisle more compliant with our rules because it removes kind of a major obstruction?
Definitely.
Mary Alice?
Perhaps this is for the applicant, but I was wondering, on average, how many employees would be using this parking lot at one time? In the winter, all the spots are taken. In the summer, when people are walking and biking more often, it's not completely full, but now it is. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there, Dennis?
Yeah, so I'm, again, I'm going back to my idea of vacating the alley to enlarge the length of the parking spots. So on zoning map B, it looks like there's also access or space between the, perhaps it's an alleyway, that continues from this parking lot all the way to Cedar Street. Is that an access point for traffic, or is that just a tree line or something?
I do not believe that that is an access point for traffic. That alley is not a through alley.
It's not a through alley?
Yeah.
So because, it's not a through alley because there's things growing on it or in it or whatever? Is that correct?
Yeah, I went out and took some site photos, and it's difficult to see from here, but there, yeah, there are shrubbery and trees, as well as, I believe, fencing.
So, I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, find interesting solutions to make the parking and, you know, actually fit the requirements of the community. I mean, if that was an alley, and if it was, if it was a city alley, it would have to be clear to be used unless it was vacated. It wouldn't be, you wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed to have brush or trees growing in an alley. We've had people in my neighborhood fined for that. So I was wondering if that would be an adequate access to the buildings and the garage and the garbage pickup? Yeah.
So the alley I think you're talking about is not owned by the library. It is an alley, but it's really tight, it's very tiny, and sometimes the apartment building has trash and couches and things, which is not an all-the-time thing, but that is, that is super tight.
So it's not, I mean, it's not owned by the library, but if it's owned by the city, the city has ordinances about keeping an alley clear?
Mm-hmm. But the people that are in the corner, the southwest corner that rent that property?
That's an R3 property.
They can't get into their...
Their driveway?
...driveway without coming in off of Race Street in the alley. So people...
Okay, I'm just trying to see if there's a solution, but you're saying basically you don't see a solution. Does staff see a solution?
Well, I think the issue that Lily touched on earlier was access to the, one, two, three, four, I think it's five parking spaces that are behind Cunningham Township Office. If there is, if this parking lot, if the library's parking lot were to be expanded to the north, it would butt up against those cars, they wouldn't be able to get out.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm looking at the overhead image of it, and I see four cars are parked in our exhibit that's, we've been shown here, and it looks like they could, they could back out. I mean, the, they're, they're, well, there wouldn't be a car behind them. I'm just trying to understand if the, if the county, if the township office parks four cars behind the office, but I see that there's a car-length of space between that and the outline of the library's plot, a parking lot. Wouldn't that be access enough? Or is that, is that lot not contiguous by access to their main lot, which is on the west side?
Well, it is, but it's also striped for their parking spaces, so they would have to lose parking.
Oh, so they'd be crossing parking spots that have been striped.
They would have to lose parking.
All right, I see that now. Just working through, trying to be creative on it.
Eric?
So I, it seems implicit in this discussion, but I'll make it explicit, that the staff who use the library have figured out how to navigate it okay in the dimensions that it exists. You haven't had any fender benders or people coming in saying, "Oh, my God, I can't navigate that lot. It's got my new bigger car," or stuff like that. It's really okay?
That's correct. The spaces are actually wider than the code calls for, which helps allow for navigating in the skinnier space.
So I guess in the interests of, if it ain't functionally broke, let's not try to fix it, I would, I would be in favor of approving this, this request.
Is that a motion?
And we'll therefore move to approve the request.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Bill?
I just, I'm thinking what kind of cars librarians drive. I don't know if librarians drive those big SUVs or the big Hummers or something. No, I think it would be interesting, though, to think about offering smaller-size parking spaces as an incentive for electric cars or, you know, I mean, we have, I guess, compact-size spaces, but it just made me think of that, that's all. I think I'll support it.
Jared?
Eric, did your motion come with a condition? That it generally conforms to the site plan in attachment A?
I, yes, yes, that was, that was implicit in my motion that I generally conform to the site plan.
I thought it was.
Right, thank you, yes.
It's in the ordinance. Thank you for clarifying. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes, okay.
Yes. That motion passes. Last item on the agenda are some appointments to boards and commissions. I'm pleased to submit the following appointments to the Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals Chair for term ending June 30th, 2023, Scott Kunkel. Mr. Kunkel's an area architect and developer, has resided in Champagne County for over 30 years. Scott also serves as the Chair of the Building Safety Code Board of Appeals and the Design Review Board. For the Sustainability Advisory Commission for term ending June 30th, 2023, Grace Wilken. Ms. Wilken is an adjunct instructor and graduate student in sustainable energy at Eastern Illinois University. She serves on the Champagne County Environmental Stewards Board of Directors and has a strong interest in making the community more sustainable. And finally, for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2021, Sarthak Prasad. Mr. Prasad is a sustainable transportation assistant at the University of Illinois. Sarthak will replace Morgan White on the commission and serve as liaison between campus transportation and the city for bicycle and pedestrian initiatives. So we thank Morgan White for her service on the BPAC. She will remain on the Sustainability Advisory Commission, and we welcome Mr. Prasad. So I'd welcome a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill. Any discussion?
Which Bill?
Bill Brown. Oh, I'm gonna have to start saying it. Which Bill moved? Was it you? What was it?
So first it was the voices, now it's the first name. I can always defer to the more formal, because I'm a little bit more formal. William.
I can do Bill Brown, I can do Bill C, Bill B and Bill C. How's that?
Just don't say Mr. Bill.
Not Mr. Bill.
Thank you.
All righty. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. And with that, this meeting is adjourned, and we will stay for a minute afterwards and take the new council picture, which is the third council picture for this term, hopefully in the final. I know the law.